I am calling the special meeting to order at this time, having been carried over from Tuesday, not continued, but special meeting. And calling that to order, we will begin with the pledge of allegiance, then we will have the community invocation, followed by the approval of the agenda. So please stand with me. Please remove your hat. Join with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. And, Lord, we just pray for the city of Emmett, Lord, that you would continue to bless it, Lord, and protect it. And, Lord, we pray for all of our elected officials, that you would give them wisdom and discernment, as they're just planning for the future of this city, Lord. So we just love you and we praise you. Amen.
Thank you so much. And along those lines, I would just ask everyone to remember, apparently some young bodies have been found in Gem County on Airport Road, at least two that I know of. Don't know all the circumstances. The ISP has been there, pathologist from Boise. And so, in any event, please, please remember the law enforcement that is involved. I can tell you, having been involved in these kinds of cases, that it sucks out your will to live sometimes, what you see, what you smell, and what never goes away, ever. So remember them in your prayers. At this time, the approval of the agenda. I'm presuming that no one, I don't know if anyone knows David Burkhardt, that's a bartender permit, if you do, or you can know him, but if you employ David Burkhardt, or if he's an agent of yours, you probably should recuse yourself at this time. I'm going to have an announcement for the good of the order, since it happened after the original agenda was published, but it's simply a reminder about Youth Appreciation Day. And so I don't think that really needs any kind of an amendment, just putting you on notice, there's going to be an announcement for the good of the order. So with that, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
President Nebiker has moved to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
And it's been seconded by Counselor Welch. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Hearing none. Any abstentions? Hearing none. Chair rules the motion passes unanimously. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest at this time? Any declarations of council members discussing outside an open meeting anything that might be decided tonight, or in the near future? Hearing none. Well, that being the case, at this time, I'm going to make a quick proclamation for National Library Week. Now, I recognize fully that officially, National Library Week, I think it was last week, it might have been this week. It's just not actually. But in any event, the reason I'm doing it for Emmett, for next week, is because we are recognizing the volunteers. Next week is National Volunteer Week. And we have so many volunteers that help out at the Emmett Library. As a matter of fact, we couldn't run our library as efficiently as we do unless we had our volunteers. So on their behalf, I'm going to proclaim National Library Week for the city of Emmett to be next week. Whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses, serving their communities. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places to foster a sense of belonging and community, regardless of socioeconomic status or abilities. Whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of the building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. Whereas for people lacking broadband at home, libraries provide access to computers and Wi-Fi. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure access for all. Whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia content, and educational programs. Whereas in times of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually. Whereas, to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. Whereas, libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Gordon W. Petrie, proclaim National Library Week to be April 19th through 23rd, 2021, in Emmett, Idaho. And during this week, I encourage all residents to visit our outstanding library in person or online, to access resources and services. And remember, libraries transform lives and communities because of you. Given under my hand, this 15th day of April, 2021, in Emmett, Idaho. So National Library Week, stop by, say hi and say thanks. Are there any announcements from city council members? Then I would like to make an announcement for the good of the order. And on the 12th, that was Monday, the Commissioners stopped by and presented us with a joint proclamation for Youth Appreciation Day. As you know, this has been an annual event. We didn't, we had kind of a hiccup and interruption last year, but they are going fully forward this year. So whereas young people are essential to the well-being and quality of life in our community, and whereas youth and their involvement in our community help to develop characteristics of good citizenship, such as commitment, dedication, compassion, work ethic, and leadership, and whereas this day shall have lasting benefits for all the citizens of our community, now therefore be it resolved that I, Gordon W. Petrie, Mayor of the City of Emmett, Mark Rico, Chairman of the Gem County Board of Commissioners, Brian Elliott, County Commissioner, and Bill Buttigieg, County Commissioner, do hereby proclaim the last Saturday of April of every year as Youth Appreciation Day in the city of Emmett and Gem County. And we enjoy, or encourage, I should say, all young people, families, and citizens of Emmett and Gem County to join us in celebrating Youth Appreciation Day. It's going to be April 24th, 2021, signed by yours truly, Brian Elliott, Bill Buttigieg, and Mark Rico. And we did that Monday.
Mayor?
Yes.
Where is it going to be at?
At the island.
The county island. Okay, thank you.
All right. At this time, I'm going to, we continued the public hearing of April 13th until today. So I am reopening that hearing at this time. This is rezon application, RZ 21-001, from industrial to residential. The applicant is David Young. Property owner is Ryan Black. I believe Mr. Black is here. He is here. There are, in addition to Mr. Black, who has signed up to address this, Jody Griffith, Jody, where, Jody, Sergio De Leon is here, Griselle De Leon is here, Stephanie Frost is here, and Mike Van de Venter is here. So we have those individuals who also want to address the council on this issue.
Mayor?
Yes.
Were you here on Tuesday?
Yes, I was. Angela Ramos.
I don't think she's on that list, but she was.
I was here on Tuesday, except to return this evening.
Do you intend to speak?
Yes, briefly, thank you.
All right. I'll tell you what, I'm just going to put your, you were here and you did sign in. I do recall that. What's the name again?
Angela Ramos.
And what's your address?
P.O. Box 141, in Emmett, 83607.
All right, thank you. And to kick off the ground rules and the basics, is our building, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, good evening. So tonight, as you said, we have a rezon application of .225 plus or minus acres from I Industrial to R3 multifamily residential. The application number is RZ 21-001. The date of the public hearing for the zoning commission was March 1st, 2021. The applicant is David Young, 14178 Blue Ridge Street, Nampa, Idaho, 83607. The property owner is Ryan Black. The subject property location is township 6 North, Range 1 West, Section 7, which is located at the corner of North Boise and Deon Street. This is a vacant lot, so it does not have an address. The parcel number is RPE 3360009001A. So we'll go through the application summary and a quick background. The applicant, David Young, on behalf of Ryan Black, is requesting approval of a rezon application on a parcel of bare land totaling approximately .225 acres from I Industrial to R3 multifamily residential. The applicant states they would like to build a fourplex either to rent or sell upon completion. The property is located on the southwest corner of North Boise Avenue and Deon Street. The property is bordered on three sides by residential uses, and the west is an industrial use. The comprehensive plan and future land use, the parcel falls within the central business district designation of the 2007 future land use map of the comprehensive plan, and is bordered on two sides by the area of city impact designation on the future land use map. We're going to jump forward now to number four, the land use, the other three items where we just went through, just the legalities. Existing land use is bare land. Description of character of the surrounding area. The surrounding area is of smaller, older homes, with the exception of an old industrial complex, the cannery to the west, separated by the alley. There are several duplexes within three blocks of this property. The property is located within walking distance of Emmett's downtown and the main commercial corridors of the community. The adjacent comprehensive plan zoning and land use designation. So to the north, south, and east, these are all zoned R1, single-family residential, with smaller, older homes, and multiple duplexes within approximately three blocks. And to the west is I Industrial, which is the old cannery. Streets and access information, the parcel has access to North Boise Avenue and Deon Street. Comprehensive plan, goals, and policies, number five. Before the city of Emmett can approve a rezon application, it must determine that the proposed zone, R3 multifamily, complies with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and future land use map. The zoning commission and city council must review both the future land use map and the text of the plan to see if the proposed zoning matches the vision described in the plan. Below, staff has copied pertinent sections of the comprehensive plan and provided an analysis of each one. Related excerpts from Comp Plan Chapter 12, Land Use, Central Business District, the Downtown Emmett. Downtown Emmett features a mix of historic architecture and residential dwellings, with a range of retail and commercial businesses. General commercial includes uses such as retail stores, offices, service establishments, shopping centers, and wholesale businesses. Residential uses such as housing, hotels, and motels may be allowed. There are several important social, economic, and environmental factors and trends which will influence future land use in the Gem community throughout the planning period of 2007 through 2025. These factors and trends are increasing in population and increasing employment, providing for housing diversity, increasing demand for business development, and increasing development along the Payette River. Central Business District land use policies, 12.33, encourage activities that traditionally locate in a pedestrian-oriented area, including offices, restaurants, employment, specialty retail shops, and mixed residential. Related excerpts from Comp Plan Chapter 3, Housing. Purpose: Encourage a variety of housing to fit the individual needs of all residents. Introduction: The housing element has a pivotal role in growth management plans. The element encourages the development of housing in a way which conserves open space, reduces unnecessary costs, and provides housing choices. With this approach, the Gem community has a way to guide the effects of growth without losing its sense of community. Providing a wide range of housing opportunities for all residents encourages neighborhoods to remain strong and people to care about community. We desire to maintain the quality of our neighborhoods while planning for the future. Future conditions: Continuous planning must occur to reflect the change in economic conditions and/or policies locally and statewide. The Gem community must recognize and anticipate that future national and state energy policies will impact housing standards. In planning for residential growth, various densities and housing types should be allowed. Examples of housing types include multifamily, duplex, townhouse, zero-lot line development, and single-family detached. The Gem community is committed to orderly, logical, and fiscally sound growth, pay-as-you-go, not putting the burden on the current residents. 1.0, General Housing Goal Statement. The Gem community recognizes that housing is one of the most basic and important human needs. All citizens must be provided with the opportunity for adequate housing. Housing policies focus on these areas. Encourage development within the area of city impact and rural residential areas in the county. Encourage workforce housing affordable to households earning from 80% to 140% of the area median income in the Gem community. Encourage diversified housing, including single-family, multifamily, and rental housing. Policy 3.1.1: Encourage the provisions of quality and diverse housing, as well as creative subdivision designs of all price ranges for present and future residents. Staff's comments, the above section of the joint comprehensive plan support the request for, to rezon the property from I Industrial to R3 multifamily. Number six, the zoning ordinance. A purpose statement of the zone, residential R District. The purpose of the residential R District is to permit the establishment of residential dwellings and other uses that are compatible with residential uses. Centralized water and sewer facilities are required in the R District in accordance with Section 7-6-2 of this code. B, the difference between I Industrial, which is the existing zone, and the R3 multifamily, which is the proposed zone, besides the uses allowed, is the maximum building height, setback, minimum lot area, and we'll see the chart below. So the maximum height in the I zone is 60 feet, and the R3 zone is 45 feet. The setbacks in the I zone is dictated by the International Building Code and International Fire Code due to fire ratings of exterior walls. And the R3 is 10 foot on the sides and the rear. So the minimum lot area in the I Industrial zone, there is no minimum lot area. And in the R3 zone, it's 8,000 square feet for the first two units, plus 800 square feet for each additional unit. Number seven, required findings and staff analysis. Emmett City Code 9-15-4, transmitted to the commission, outlines the process and findings for review and approval of zoning amendment applications, which is what a rezon applications are classified under. Section B requires the commission to find that the request is in accordance with the adopted comprehensive plan. This is the only standard in the zoning ordinance by which the commission must evaluate rezon requests. Staff's analysis of relevant comprehensive plan policies are provided above. The commission and council must find that the comprehensive plan map and policies support the residential application, or the rezon application, I'm sorry. Number eight, staff recommendation. Staff finds that the proposed rezon from industrial to residential conforms with the basic intent of the comprehensive plan, policies, and future land use map. Staff finds the location, which is a lot adjacent to residential lots, incompatible industrial land use classification, which would outlaw, which would allow outright uses not compatible with the surrounding residential uses, which staff feels would be detriment to the neighborhood, are key considerations along with the policies that support a change for this parcel. If approved, the rezon will be a downgrade of the industrial zone classification for the allowed uses of the property, but would be a spot zone in the middle of an all R1 single-family residential zone. Based on the information presented today and available to staff, we recommend approval of this rezon from industrial to residential. The council must decide if R3 multifamily is the appropriate zone for the neighborhood, or if another residential zoning classification, R1 or R2, would better suit this area.
Just so I understand, for purposes of perhaps ruling on any issues, staff essentially finds R3 more compatible than the existing zone, is that the basis?
That is correct. It definitely needs to be a rezon of some type to a residential zone, because the nature of the neighborhood is residential.
All right.
The industrial use that could go there would just totally, could destroy that neighborhood.
I'm sorry.
The way it is currently zoned with an industrial zoning classification, you could put a tire factory in there. So there's a lot of detriment that could happen.
All right. So thank you. Before we begin, does council have any questions for Mr. Sullivan?
Mayor?
Yes.
So Brian, we talked about the industrial allowed uses right there. So what all is there, could a motel be there under industrial, or is that?
Industrial would be a commercial use for the motel, but you could have a tire factory, warehousing, cement factory, asphalt plant, all of those would be allowed in that zone.
Is there any kind of parking requirement if they put an industrial building on there? Would you be required to put off-street parking for that?
Every use is required some type of off-street parking according to our parking, our chart in 9-11 of our city code. I'm not exactly 100% sure what the requirement would be for industrial.
But there is.
But there would be some kind of parking requirement, yes.
It would be driven by the type of industrial.
The type of industrial use, yes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The only problem with an industrial cement factory, whether the noise ordinance, at nine o'clock, they'd have to shut down, or 10 o'clock, whatever it is.
It starts at 10, so from, I think it's 6:00 a.m. throughout the day to 10:00 p.m., they could operate their factory, but then at nighttime, they'd have to shut down.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So Brian, and maybe you just got cut off, but when the zoning commission had their public hearing, they recommended approval of this rezon?
Yes, they did, and that's in your packet also, the zoning commission recommendation, which I can read that if you want me to, or if you've all read that.
Agreed.
I will read it. Okay. So the application was the rezon, number 21-001, from I Industrial to R3 multifamily. The applicant, David Young, on behalf of Ryan Black, which is the owner. The date of the zoning commission hearing was March 1st, 2021. And then the original hearing date was April 13th, and it's been continued till April 15th. Some of the public testimony in favor was the applicant. Neutral, there was nobody neutral, opposed, were Angela Ramos, Jody Griffith, and Christine De Leon. The zoning commission recommendation was approval of the rezon from I to R3. It was a unanimous vote. And the reasons and findings for the recommendation. The commission finds the proposed rezon conforms with the basic intent of the comprehensive plan and future land use map. The commission finds the parcel best fits the residential zoning classification, as the current zone of industrial does not fit the nature of the residential neighborhood.
Mayor?
Yes.
Counsel, give your opinion.
Yes.
So Brian, if this duplex is to go in, is there a requirement, or are there plans that you are aware of that will show that there is off-street parking? Do you have restrictions for that?
Yes, there's one and a half spaces required per unit. You're not here tonight, but I do have the rendition of the building that they were wanting to construct, showing the property, the parking, the overall appearance of the structure itself. And it does show.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Two parking spaces per unit. So they're exceeding what the requirement is.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody? Okay, thank you very much.
All right. That answers that question?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Council have any other questions before we have Mr. Ryan Black address you? Do you have anything further, Mr. Sullivan?
No, I do not, unless there's any more questions.
Thank you. Mr. Black?
I'll be right here.
Let me check the volume. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mayor.
What I'm going to ask you to do quickly is just state your full name and correct spelling, and then where you reside.
Sure. My name is Ryan Black, R-Y-A-N-B-L-A-C-K. I reside at 18467 Avalon Place in Nampa, Idaho.
All right. Thank you.
Once again, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, counsel. I know this is kind of an extra meeting, and I appreciate your time. The hardest part of this for me is upsetting any of my neighbors. I have worked in the area over there. I run a business called Blackstone Construction. And I actually took the house next door and remodeled it. It's a 1916 house. We turned it into a modern house that really kind of upped the area. We put in a nice living space, and the new owners are very proud of it, and we did a pretty good job. We included three spaces of off-road parking at the house that we remodeled, because we do understand that parking's a big concern in this area. The roads are pretty narrow. Trying to get people off the road is definitely a major concern for us, and it has been addressed. From what I heard, property value and parking were the two biggest issues that the public brought up at the zoning meeting. So the proposed building will add appeal to the neighborhood, and it's going to plug a hole in the landscape of the area. As of now, the appeal you get right there is looking at the old cannery. So it's definitely a space that needs to be upgraded and brought into the modern times, you know? The proposed building's going to address the concerns of the public as far as parking. We're going to provide three spaces of parking per unit, and then there's one to spare. So we've definitely taken parking into consideration. This is all on the property, so that parking's included. The sidewalk is beyond that, and then there's another easement that's, I believe, at six feet. So parking on the lot has been addressed. There is definitely a current issue with cars parked on both sides of the road in the area, and we're determined to get that off-road parking taken care of. Planning and zoning discussed the fact that Emmett's in need of multifamily dwellings, the fact that this type of building is suited for the lot, and the building would be appropriate for the neighborhood. They ultimately approved the recommendation to rezon to R3 multifamily. My goal's to better this neighborhood. I've listened to the input from my neighbors, have taken them into consideration. I was born in Payette, I've lived in Idaho my whole life. I'm from here, I appreciate what's going on. It's kind of crazy to see the growth, but as Brian kind of did his whole homework on, it's something that the area probably needs, somewhere for people that can't necessarily purchase a house, to have a pretty nice place to live. The building's designed with a zero-maintenance landscape, no grass to be overgrown, no The building's designed with a zero-maintenance landscape, no grass to be overgrown, no trees to share leaves with the neighbors. We want to do a small back porch with some pavers, keep the trash cans, have them designated area in the alley for them, really kind of put a lot of thought into what would help the area. As I said, I worked in the area, and I really have seen what's going on, that house we've worked on for about a year. So I've been around the area. I have family in Emmett, and I'm actually over here quite a bit, so I plan on building my house in Sweet. My name's Ryan Black, my company's Blackstone Construction. I brought some cards, I want to share cards with anybody that would want to take one. I'm more than willing to take calls or address concerns with the neighbors, trying to be straightforward and just get a real nice place to get some extra people, an affordable place to live, so. I guess my final comment is that planning and zoning recommended the zoning to R3, and I hope the council will follow the recommendation and provide the much-needed resource for people who just aren't able to purchase a house, because the market's kind of crazy, so appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any council member have any questions for Mr. Black?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Black, so I see the drawing here, you have the garage coming, is that coming off of Deion, or is that coming off of Boise Avenue?
That faces Deion.
It does face Deion, so.
Yes.
Is there an alley behind there? Is that where you put the parking for your other home that you remodeled, is that correct? It comes off of the alley behind?
The parking for the remodeled house does come off the alley.
More traffic off of Boise's, putting more in that alley?
Does, yep.
And this might do the same, is it what you're thinking, or?
It should, well, it's going to remove it from the street. The other parking, the extra spaces, do point off of Boise Avenue, on the other side of the sidewalk, removed from the street.
It's lengthy, so those other parks will come off of Boise Avenue?
Those extra spaces. So there's two in front, there's one in the garage and one right in front of the house, and then the extra spaces are off of Boise.
So they'll drive directly off of Boise Avenue onto?
Into the space.
The spaces.
Yep.
Any other questions? Very none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Jody Griffith. Ms. Griffith, I'm going to ask you to state your full name, correct spelling, especially for the first name, and where you reside.
Jody Griffith, and it's J-O-D-I-G-R-I-F-F-I-T-H. I live at 320 North Boise Avenue, directly across from the project, this project that he wants to do.
All right.
A year and a half ago, my husband passed away, or last year he passed away, and we moved because he had dementia, and we decided to buy a house in Emmett. I'm kind of rambling all that together, but I'm raising my 15-year-old son. He homeschools. Due to having to take care of his dad, he got used to doing that and likes it, so it works out for us. And he works. And at a ranch, I'm a mail carrier here in town, and I go to Sweet Noah, do the route out there. And so I'm very much aware of street sizes and trying to get in and out, and I'm, of course, very good friends with all of the mail carriers here in town, and they actually can't even imagine this being there. They said this street is so narrow that you, and there's never any parking, and the thought of having to try to find a place to put their mail rig and get out and do their walking, that they do. Because they have to find a place to park it and then go do their route, and then I'm more of a regular carrier and go to each mailbox. Anyway, I moved here because I lived in Caldwell, and my grandparents, great-grandparents came over here in a covered wagon and farmed. And my grandpa used to say, "We feed the nation." He said Idaho was, could eat the dirt. And he did. He would taste it, and he knew what was wrong with it, and he was just a farmer, a dairy farmer. Anyway, I left Caldwell and Nampa area because my grandparents' farm just got pushed out, the houses, and the hay prices, five, six bucks a bale to now 12 bucks a bale. And I was like, "This is crazy." And now, unfortunately, a year and a half later here, it's happening. The fields are turning into houses. So I am against all of the housing. I'm afraid I'm more of the, "Use what we have, make it better, get food back into the area." I just don't understand why we're not doing more growing to that. I don't see FFA anywhere. I was 4H leader for four years. I'm pro-kids, pro-family, and absolutely pro-growing. We have to feed our people. Yes, we want to house them, but we also have to feed them. And so I'm really into wanting to do growing on the little strips of ground, trying to get public people interested in doing that. And I talked to one lady who's also interested in that, and just to promote people wanting to have a garden. So I could see a beautiful house, shop, garden area, and grass, play area, there. I mean, that's what I could see easily, that. There is absolutely no parking. And he's saying there is no parking. He had trouble parking last year when he was working. There was always no place to park his rig. And, I mean, just for, I looked out yesterday, and there's a semi-truck, because the one thing that's been left out of this is, we're industrial. So the industrial business that is, just as you're turning on Boise and industrial, right there, semi-trucks are parking to be able to unload, and then you keep going down Boise Avenue, at the end, there's a machine shop. So you've got trucks, trailers, trucks, all hauling down there, and they don't care that they're going through residential, to get down there to have their machinery worked on. And behind that is the fertilizer plant right there, where they're getting fertilizer, trailers are coming through, extremely busy. The kids are, you know, you have to constantly hope that they don't, out there playing, because they don't care. They're residential, they don't care, they go flying through there. So imagine eight to 10, 12 more cars, because the duplex, one of the duplexes is a block over it, there's always five cars there, and that's just two families. And, you know, they fenced off an area for their kids to play and try to make it suitable and safe, and that's an alleyway. And then the other one is a very, very old building, I'm not even sure what year that is. It's extremely old, brick building, that's a duplex. Anyway, I went around and I spoke with my neighbors. I hit every neighbor I could that was around, and I got 23 signatures that said they don't want it there. And they didn't understand why you would even want, why you guys, why the planning commission would even want it there, because it's just old houses, nice old houses. I just spent $35,000 in putting solar on mine, and I'd already remodeled the remodel, 1920 out, you know, house. And to see rentals go in, I lived in rentals when I was in my twenties, many, many, many years ago, and unfortunately, you get people that maybe don't care so much about their environment because they're renting. They didn't pay the money for the, you know, $150,000 for their home, and I've seen, I look through all of the houses for sale right now, and you're talking $259, $2340 for a house, three-bedroom house with a shop and a yard, a couple of fruit trees. I mean, I envisioned that there. I mean, to me, and I don't see that that's a small amount of money to make. He made $259 on the one that was, that he remodeled. So housing market, of course, is very hot right now, and yes, it is, but is that, you know, the people that are moving in, buying those houses, aren't from Emmett. They're from California, or Texas, or, you know, out of state, and they're, you know, they have the money to buy those more expensive houses that are older, but people have remodeled and made that environment all looks like that. We all have smaller, older homes. So this big, humongous building right there, I don't see that it would even fit. And as far as parking, there's no way. There's absolutely just no way. It's just not, I have a picture of yesterday, a semi-truck and a bus trying to go through. There's just no way, there's no room. And I can't imagine that it would fit in the area. But either did the neighbors, because I spoke with 23 of them, and they said they can't imagine it either. I wish they would be here and talk to you, but they did at least tell me, which was a great thing to do, because I had never met them. So I pounded on some doors and talked to everybody, and they told me about the duplex that it used to have really bad drug issues, and right at the moment, there's people in there that are not, there's no issues, which is great. And there is no maintenance. I find that awful, that there's no grass. There's no grass, no trees. I mean, there's nothing growing there, it's just gravel. And yes, it's easy maintenance, but there's no, it's not warm and inviting in any way. Anyway, I don't know what else to say about it, other than I purchased my home that it could be someplace I could raise my son and spend the rest of my days, and I can't imagine that being across the street.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any council person have a question?
What house do you live in? Is it the one on the corner?
No, it's straight across between two houses. Prista Cole, I think, used to live there, and she owned it. I don't know if she lived there, she just rented it out, but that's where I bought it from. Little, it's small, very small house. The only reason I bought it was, number one, I would put an offer in actually two or three houses, and they would sell for $25,000 over what I was, you know, when I was doing asking price. And it was the only one I could find, and it had a huge, empty backyard that had not been touched. I'm 30 years of landscaping, so I was like, "Ha, yes." So this is, was like, perfect for me. Unfortunately, I pulled all my, I hurt myself, so I can't do it for a living anymore, but I can enjoy doing it at home. Anyway.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just to let you know, there is a huge 4H and FFA program here in.
Oh, I know, I already spoke to him. Oh, yeah, I actually volunteered to be a leader for my son.
I guess I misunderstood, I thought you said that.
I had done it in the past. My oldest son's 21, and so I was a leader the whole time he was growing up, and yes, I have spoke with many people here in town. In fact, I went in, and they were having some, just some issues with bringing in new leaders and stuff, but, so I just volunteered just to help, whatever I could do. Yeah, it's hugely important to me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Yes, sir.
Ma'am, I just have a question for you.
Sure.
So were you living there when the other house that he owned was remodeled?
Yes.
And sold? Did you notice any increase in traffic or any concerns with that being?
Well, they have a place to park in the back. They have two places, they park in the back, and then he parks in the front, and then any time he has visitors, you know, you're hoping, I tore out my front yard and made a parking area for it, because my son comes and visits, and there's never any place to park. And if they have actually two cars come, there's just no place to park.
So you didn't really see any large increase in traffic because the parking?
From a one person, no. No. They, I don't, I don't know if it's, I assume it's a couple, but they park their vehicles in the back, and then they have one, his work vehicle. So that's three vehicles right there, and that's just a family, but times four families, I can't even imagine it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. De León? Please state your name, spelling, and where you reside.
Sergio De León, S-E-R-G-I-O-D-E-L-E-O-N. I reside at 312 North Boise, Emmett. My concern on this fourplex is the parking. Fourplex, for being in here close to the mountains, families don't have, those fourplex are built for compact cars, not for big old trucks that come in, you know, they go hunting and everything, so each family that I've noticed have three vehicles. So you add nine vehicles, I mean, fourplex times two, that's eight, plus another third vehicle, which is their hind rig or something, that's 12 vehicles. So we're thinking, park 12, maybe even more vehicles. I got seven grandkids that come over, and for all this traffic, it's, you know, it's, they're trying to ride their bikes and everything, and you got all this traffic going through. I've been there since 80, 97, in my residence. Traffic just got even worse when the sport complex came in, but we do need the sports complex in there. But our traffic just tripled by that, because they only had one entrance on the north side of the island. So traffic was going there like crazy, we had to keep our kids, you know, they couldn't ride bikes. And if we don't have time to take them out to the island, I mean, there's more just traffic everywhere. So anyways, I just don't think a fourplex would be good because of all the traffic, of all their vehicles being parked there. I mean, I've been there 25 years, and it just, it just keeps on building and building. I mean, I got, in the back, I live right in front of that empty lot, where they're going to want to build a fourplex, and I got two duplexes in the back. Each, I mean, they don't care about maintenance, they don't care about traffic. I got cars flying through the alley, which they're rentals, nobody cares, you know, you live there, you pay rent, you destroy the place, they get kicked out, they leave. So now we get a fourplex come in, same situation, drug addicts, I mean, you name it, they come in. And we're trying to have a regular, live-in, peaceful neighborhood, but I just don't understand why fourplex would be good. That's, I mean, my, for living there so long and having the other two duplexes, it's just bad. I don't think it's good. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mayor?
Yes?
One question, and I, Jody had already mentioned it, so I didn't ask her, but what would you like to see there?
I mean, if they want to build something, maybe a single home, a nice one. But fourplex, for me, for experience, living there 25 years and having the two duplexes in the back, it's just bad. I mean, you got all kinds of neighbors going in there, in and out, in and out, done, they get kicked out, they move in and destroy the places. I mean, I got cameras everywhere, just to try to protect all myself. So, I mean, a single home dwelling would be good, I think.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Mayor?
Anymore?
Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah.
Do you know the square footage of your home, roughly idea?
Mine's about 1,000 square foot. I added $42,000 worth of solar panels, making it look, it's all remodeled and everything. Nice driveway from Boise Avenue all the way to the alley, which I can park all kinds of vehicles. I love hunting and camping, so all the vehicles I got, they fit in my property, perfect. And I'm just one, one, one family, but I got three vehicles, mine, my wife's, and my truck, two tall, my four-wheelers, trailer and everything going, so I can imagine, I mean, a fourplex going in, it's going to be crazy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor, have you seen the pictures?
Yeah.
Of the build? And you're still objective to that?
Yeah, I don't. I mean, I used to do construction back in the 90s.
Yeah.
When they give me blueprints, you have this blueprint, looks perfect and great, but once you build it, I mean, it's so tight, everything's so tight. It's fourplexing that land, I mean, that carport in there, that garage, is made for probably a side-by-side, little compact car. But a lot of people these days use garages as storages. So they use that as storage, their two vehicles are out, plus their third one, you're going to have traffic everywhere.
It's only 12 cars. You know, it's not like they're going to be driving in and out all day long.
They're not, but 12 cars plus a third one, they got teenagers, they're going to have a car, you know, it's going to be like, maybe two, three, four. If they got two teenagers, there's going to be two more cars.
And your point about drugs, it's all over the city.
Yeah, it's all over.
I'm not saying that, you know, it doesn't just, you know, conform to duplexes, fourplexes and that.
Yeah.
You know, regular houses have the same problems. I'm not saying it's here in Emmett, I'm just saying nationwide.
Mm-hmm.
It's not, so bringing in a fourplex like that's not going to all of a sudden, "Whoa, here we got drug plays."
No, I'm not saying that, it's just, in my experience, in the two duplexes I got in the back, I see that, I've been seeing that constantly. You know, people just move in, thrash it, destroy it, leave everything, and, I mean...
I understand, I've had rentals.
I've seen it, I've had rentals too, and I've dealt, so I ended up selling everything.
Yeah.
For those reasons, I mean, I pay more to kick them out, and you can't evict them because they got, they got more.
More power.
More power than the owner does. So it was better, evict them, sell it, and forget it.
That's why you have to, you know, check them out before you rent to them.
Yeah. I mean, back in the day when I had rentals was different than now.
You've had rentals. You know, in this town, try to find a rental right now.
Yeah.
Can't be done. So, you know, any time that we're bringing in more rentals and more houses that would be for rent, I think it's a good thing.
It probably is a good thing, but here in Emmett, you need low housing, and... And that's, does not look like low housing income. Not one bit. That's what people are looking here, and low housing is not available in Emmett.
No, not anywhere.
No. I mean, that's why people need that, people can have it. So I'm just, I don't care for that fourplex.
Well, I appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
That it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Griselle Deleon.
I'm not speaking.
Oh, you're not, okay. Stephanie Frost.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Could I get you to state your name, how you spell particularly your first name, and then where you reside?
Okay. My name is Stephanie Frost and it's S-T-E-P-H-A-N-I-E. My last name is Frost, like Jack Frost, F-R-O-S-T. And I live at, sorry, I'm a bit nervous, 406 North Boise Avenue. I actually live on the corner of where this duplex is gonna be built. I have lived there for two years. I used to live in a rental in Emmett for, phew, nine years, and that's a long time for a rental. But when I first moved in, I was paying $500 a month and I had an acre fenced-in backyard. And then my rent went up to 550 for a couple of years, which is fine. But then all of a sudden, my rent wanted to go up to 850 dollars a month. And that, at the time, that was a little out of my budget because I hadn't gone up in the ranks and the position that I'm currently in, which is research and investigations and financial industry. During my time of living at my current residence, yes, there is a real need for parking. This fourplex looks absolutely beautiful on paper, but if you lived on my street and you had little kids riding their bicycles, and if one got hurt or got hit by another vehicle coming too fast down the street, I'm pretty sure you would not want that fourplex there. Every year on the 4th of July, we are the closest to the island. We have people from all over Idaho coming to Emmett to watch fireworks. And guess where they park? Down our street. And guess what they do? They go out, they get maybe drinking or having a little bit of fun, and they come down our street faster than a rocket. And last year, kids almost got killed and the police were called. Police are called every year to our street during the 4th of July holiday. We do not need a fourplex. There's not enough room. There's just not. And if you think there's enough room, I would invite every one of you to come to that street and visit the housing, see, see the activity that goes on around there. If we build a fourplex, then those people that do have those industry jobs that live there, we're gonna lose their jobs. Then where are they gonna go? Now we've created another problem. That cannery, people actually work there. I see people coming in and out of there all the time. There's that little place that's down the street a ways, they've got lots of people that work there. Where are they gonna go? That is an icon, that's a historical place to Emmett, and you just wanna get rid of it and like pretend like it doesn't exist anymore? I understand we have a need for housing, but we really need to look at a better, a better option and a better location for this fourplex to accompany. We have three people that live in my home. We have a truck that we use to go to the dumpster or the landfill out there. I have my vehicle, my other have his vehicle, and our son, who's just learning how to drive, has his vehicle. That's four. One house, one family of three. Lots of people have kids that aren't even driving yet, but eventually they will be driving. What I would like to see done with that piece of property is build just a single-family home. We are a very small community, we are very close-knit. Our goal is on the sidewalk, outside the sidewalk area, this summer, we are working on building a community garden. And our worst fear is come July the 4th, when we have another one of these big things go on, that it's gonna get torn up and it's gonna get wrecked. And the more people moving into the area, crime goes up. You know, we've had break-ins, vehicles, all kinds of stuff, and it's very worrisome for me because I work from home. So my window faces right out of North Boise and I can see the 18-wheelers, the cars coming in, and you've got Amazon who can't find a place to park. And they've gotta go up, where that empty lot is right now, that's where they have to go and park to deliver packages down our street. I just don't think it's a really good idea. I know that the person probably has a really good heart in doing this, but you worked in the area, but you don't live on that street. And I'm just asking the city council not to build that fourplex.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Now, I wanna get exactly where your house is. Is it on the southwest corner of Dionne and Boise?
I don't have directions.
That's incorrect.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And your big problem is parking?
Well, that's one of the problems, yes.
You have two vehicles parked in front of your house, one on Dionne, one on Boise Avenue, that both have trailers behind them.
My house, I don't have trailers. I drive a Subaru, how am I gonna pull a trailer on a Subaru? The other, the other vehicle that we have...
I just went by tonight, and that, the house that you're describing...
No, I live in the greenhouse with Maria Tren.
What's that?
She lives right on the corner.
Okay.
Dionne and...
Okay.
I don't have trailers. You, you need to come over after this meeting and let me show you I don't have a trailer. In fact, my vehicle and the other vehicle park behind my house because we have it gravelled out and we have a little shed that we keep the Harley in. So we do not have a trailer.
And you don't know who the people were parked in front of your house and on the side of your house with a trailer attached to their vehicle?
If they have a trailer, maybe they're moving something, but it's not my vehicle.
It's on the opposite side of the street that you're talking about, Gary. You're talking about the northeast corner.
Okay, I'm talking about the house that's on the southwest.
That's where this property is on the south.
No, 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 I'm talking of, of Dionne and Commercial.
Well, I'm not on Dionne Commercial.
Completely out of the way.
Okay, you live on the other side, okay.
I'm on North Boise and Dionne, I'm right on the corner.
Got it, okay.
And I thought I made that clear in the very beginning.
I'm sorry. The way I looked at the picture, it looked like you described it on being on North Commercial.
No, I said on North Boise, which is on the corner right there at Dionne.
Okay.
I face directly Catty Corner to where they're wanting to build the fourplex.
But you do know of the, okay, the two trailers that are parked there?
No, because I'm usually working...
No, no, not on your, I stand corrected, not on your property, but they're still down the street from you.
I'm not, I'm really bad with directions and I don't get out in the front much.
As much as I'm concerned, that's...
Yeah.
But I'm sorry, I just...
That's okay.
Do you have any other questions with regard to...
No, I do not.
Okay. President Democrat.
Do you know the square footage of your home possibly? Close?
What is it?
About 1,000 square.
About 1,000 square feet.
And do you have alley access to your property?
Yes, we do.
And then you have a backyard where you do park semi vehicles?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all right.
Yes, I do. Yep.
Ma'am, I've got a question, we've got some questions here.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I, I wanna make sure, was it your testimony that your concern was, I mean, apart from parking, it seems to be the thing tonight. But apart from the parking, you thought, was it your position that if this particular lot, the property in question, goes from industrial to R3, that you're afraid that the other areas will be shut down? The cannery, you mentioned the cannery.
Well, yes, because if you're gonna put in those and you're gonna make it a residential area, then you're still going to have, my fear is that they're going to be shut down. Because where are those 18-wheelers going to go? When they're going, that's their, that's the only exit, they got two different accesses. One is through Commercial, one is up Deleon, and the other one is up North Boise Avenue. There's three entrances to where they've got to go. So what's gonna happen to them?
Okay, well, maybe we can clarify that. Did you, did you have something?
Just before you move on to the next person, I wanna say something.
Okay.
Are we done with her?
Are you done?
No, I'm done. If you're done...
Okay, thank you.
So Councilor Zinkin brings up a good point, I know we've had, you can sit down, ma'am.
Okay.
I know it's been a while since we've had a public hearing on a land use type of thing. It's generally not appropriate for council members to go and survey the property before the hearing. Because as you pointed out, you may have received some information outside of the public hearing that the rest of the council doesn't have.
Right.
Which may influence your decision that was based on information not here in the meeting. So the way, one way to cure that is to first disclose that you have visited the area, and then number two, to then inform the rest of the council in the public hearing what your observations were, so that everybody has the same information at their disposal and that also, as our, our last person testified, can correct any of that information. So Councilor Zinkin, if you would please disclose the nature and the extent of your visit to the site area.
I just went there for one reason, so to just observe what all is in place there and to look at the property, look at the neighborhood, and see if I had any questions that I'd like to bring forth to the city council on anything and to see if anybody, you know, had other ideas and see what their major complaints were. I know when I read this, they made major complaint about parking. And so I wanted to look at it and see how, why the streets were and all of that. It's nothing that anybody else couldn't have gone down and looked at. And I basically just did it so I didn't have an informed, I asked questions, in which I did.
Okay. So in the future...
Mayor?
When we have these types of...
Just a matter of conversation.
When we have these types of land use hearings, please do not go to the site. All the information that you receive about the application and about the land you should be done in the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Ken Alston Henderson.
So I also went by there today, but I was on my way to someplace else and I, I just drove past there. I didn't stop and do any measurements or anything, but I drove by. I wasn't in the area for anything other than I was traveling through to go to my property. I was trying to avoid town.
All right.
I didn't speak with anybody, I didn't, I didn't do any sight, you know, get out and look at anything, I just, like I said, I just drove by.
So, okay, so you were, you were on your way to somewhere else?
Yes. I just didn't want somebody to see my car and think that I was doing something else I wasn't, so...
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My daughter lives down the street from there, that's why I was just driving by from there. I didn't make like a special trip to go look at it, I was at my daughter's house.
All right. All right. In the future, when I, when we talk about disclosing things, that's, these are the kinds of things that we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Van...
I didn't, I didn't think that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just didn't think there was any problem with me driving by there, sorry.
Well, other than the fact that it's the actual area, there's no, no problem, but it's the actual area that is under discussion and the disclosure probably should have been done at the beginning, but that's fine, we've made the disclosure. Mr. Van de Venter. Please state your full name, how you spell particularly your last name, and where you reside.
My name is Michael Van de Venter, that's spelled V-A-N-D-E, capital V-E-N-T-E-R. I'm a resident at 406 North Boise Avenue, Emmett, Idaho.
All right, thank you. What do you have for the council?
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, council people. I am here to oppose the, the quadruplex. I understand this community, I've been here my whole life, you know, I grew up on Riverside. I've spent a lot of time here and I've watched the new buildings come in, and I'm sure most of you have too. I mean, most of us have lived here our whole lives or at least a good part of it, and we remember coming down the hill, seeing the orchards, you know, driving down through Highway 16 and smelling the mint. We remember how this place was, and we all know, like it, don't like it, progress happens, right? It's gonna happen. Emmett's gonna grow, we all understand that. We know we can't fight it. We know that landowners have rights and they're gonna do what they feel like is best for them and for, for, you know, their property. Our question is what's best for the area and what's best for Emmett? I can't speak to that. I have no ambition to be on the city council, I don't envy you, your positions, but I can tell you a few things about my neighborhood. I've been there for over 20 years, I've raised my son there. And I've watched the stuff that happens in this neighborhood as a very quiet neighbor. I try to stay out of everybody's business, not a busybody. In fact, I don't wanna be here right now. But what I did see is, I have got a street that on both ends, I have the traffic coming off of the island. Now, they talked about the 4th of July, okay? Is it just the 4th of July? Just tonight, speaking on the council, somebody asked, where is that being held at the island? It's always being held at the island and the traffic is always going right through our neighborhood. That doesn't change. Yeah, we have lots of vehicles that are parked there. Yep, people occasionally park a trailer so they can load it up with, you know, tree limbs and leaves and they can pull it to the dump. It's a normal neighborhood, except for the fact that we have so many cars parked on it. And I'm not gonna focus on that because you've, I heard that, most likely you've discounted it. My concern is, is that coming off that island isn't just people coming from the park. From that workshop down there, we have semi trucks flowing through there. Several years back, I watched one of those semi trucks barrel into a minivan and destroy it. Barrel into it, broad daylight. You know, I have sat there and I've had my dogs poisoned. Did the police report? You know, it's just the way it is, when the housing goes up and more people move in, more complaints, more issues. So the other end of the park, what have I got? I've got Patriot Center and I've got the Axel or the trailer building place. So they're pulling trailers in and out of there, they're pulling trucks in and out of there. I got Les Schwab up the road, I've got the commercial factory, we've got all kinds of commercial stuff going through there all the time. Now how is putting a quadruplex in there? You guys keep saying 12 cars, I can't imagine parking 12 cars on that entire property. If you go look at it, it doesn't make sense. The other thing is that, when was the last soil survey done on that property? Because they've been parking semi trucks there for years. Anybody here know a truck that doesn't leak? I don't. You know, is anybody actually looking to see if there's any hazardous stuff on that property? I mean, it's been industrial for years unless I'm mistaken. I just don't think that, that this is well thought out. Yes, we absolutely need more housing in Emmett, I guess, I'm not sure why everybody thinks that's necessary, I like it as it is for the most part. But putting it into small residential neighborhoods, increasing the density is only gonna cause problems. You can't show me a single way that it isn't. Not a single way. I come to you guys today because I feel passionate about the fact that we have a choice right now. We can either look at small neighborhoods like mine as a cottage neighborhood, as a place that can become a great community area, that can look good and can benefit this community, or we can put in as many quadruplexes and duplexes and low, you know, low-level housing as we can and turn it into a dumping site. Now I understand, I've lived in some of those places, I lived in a duplex. We all have to start somewhere. I think that's understandable, haven't we all started somewhere? But my question is... But my question is, at what point do you look at it and say, is it a benefit to something greater or is it a detriment? Are we gonna turn this area into a cottage? Are we gonna turn it into a ghetto? And maybe that sounds dramatic, and I understand, members of the council hear this kind of stuff all the time, and you're probably numb to it. But we're not numb to it. We live there. So yes, I would like to see it rezoned. I absolutely would. I'd like to see the whole thing rezoned. As residential neighborhoods, one-family dwellings, I think it would be amazing. I think you would have a great area around that park where kids could play and be safe, where families could have good interactions with each other. And that, at the end of the day, we're not just building a bunch of flatboard places where we can stuff people for two years to a month and then rebuild and, and try to restructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Van Deventer?
Mayor?
Yes, President.
Sir, do you know the square footage of your home?
Yes, it's thou, it's actually nine hundred and sixty square feet.
And do you have alley access to your home?
I do.
And backyard parking at all?
We've created it, yes.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Angela, if you would state your name and spell it for us and let us know where you reside.
Angela Ramos, last name R-A-M-O-S. My mailing address is P.O., Box 141, Emmett, Idaho, 83617. I do reside in the neighborhood. For privacy reasons, I don't care to disclose my location publicly. I am very close to the proposed fourplex. I do not know Mr. Black personally. I don't told anything personally against him for his plans. It looked great what I saw in the vision, but I believe I hold the same concerns that I've heard other people express. Traffic, parking, the possibility of having concerns with a lot of changes in tenants in the area. I moved to the area, to that house, to live in a single-family resident zoned area and not be near all of that kind of traffic that you might see in a more congested area with multifamily homes. I am not super familiar with all of the real estate laws. I've been studying the zoning maps of both the county and the city, so perhaps some of this I don't understand very well. But when I had called and inquired about my own property before, which is very close to there, I was told that every home, every residence in that area, every piece of land, was to be single-family housing from here on out, regardless of the current designation of the two, there are not multiple, there are two duplexes in the area. So that was my understanding. So I am a little bit confused as to where it fits into the plan, because I didn't see it in what I read, that it was some, that a piece of land could be rezoned to, for future development. And had, when I had made the call, my understanding was that that was the zoning for that area. My understanding is that it has to be in a designated development area. So excuse me if I'm misunderstanding that. My understanding is that is not a designated area for development within Emmett. I also, from what I understand, would think that a mixed-use piece of property would fit the needs of the gentleman wanting to construct there versus an industrial that's next to a single-family residential area. The traffic is really congested, traffic parking. When I drive home in the evening, I pass in front of the island. I go down Boise Avenue and make a ride onto Deion to make my, my way home. And there is only room for one car to pass through, so there is not enough room for two cars to pass through at the same time. So whenever there's another oncoming car, I always have to pull over or the other person has to pull over in order to let, you know, me let someone else pass by or they're letting me pass by. But there's not enough room on the road with the dimensions in order to pass through at the same time with two lanes. And it is the same way on Deion. So both Deion and North Boise, very narrow, narrow streets, heavy traffic, and, you know, pretty much the, the same concerns that everyone else has expressed.
All right. Any council members have any questions? You do?
Same questions, ma'am.
Did you know the square footage of your home?
Thirteen forty.
And do you have alley access to your home too?
No, I do not.
Do you have any parking on your property besides on the street?
I do, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, wait, ma'am?
Yes.
We have one more question, apparently.
Yes.
You say that when traffic comes down there, that only one car at a time could go through?
Yes, that's been my experience.
That's the way it is all over the city. And putting in a single home or a fourplex is not gonna change that situation. And also, there's, in your neighborhood, there's also many people that are parking trailers on the street. And that is not within code ordinances of the city.
I have noticed there have been some trailers. I myself only take my trailer. I do have a trailer that I bring to my home to transport and remove items from my yard. I have seen a trailer parked, I believe it belongs to a duplex behind me. I'm not really sure. And I don't know what the, I, like I said, I'm not familiar with the real estate zoning laws and all of that. I don't know about infrastructure, how many lanes are required. So perhaps in other areas, it's congested like that. It just seems like a lot of traffic, and there are a lot of, lot of cars going through. And having to stop and pull over is very inconvenient. And I'm also concerned about when my children go outside and they're walking or riding their bikes in the area, an increase in traffic makes me concerned for their safety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At the last one?
All right. Before I call for any other further testimony, Mr. Solomon, if you'd come down, there's a couple of issues in the, in the record that I would like to have clarified. The one issue that was raised is if this particular lot, a particular piece of property goes from industrial to R3, that that will have some sort of domino effect on the, the cannery or the, the other places that might be in industrial or commercial zone?
No, it will not. It will not affect that. This is a separate owned piece of property. The owner of the cannery, his name is Dick Emzur, he's out of Colorado, that owns that. This is a totally separate, freestanding property. So it will not affect anything with the cannery property.
Then the, the issue that was brought up by Ms. Ramos with regard to when she called about her property and it's unclear to me who she was speaking to, but I'm gonna presume it was to Emmett Building Department, Zoning Department. We'll just make that assumption for purposes of the question. And her, she was informed that the, the property there was R1 residential and it was planned that it would remain R1 residential.
No, it would have been stated that it is an R1 zone, single-family residential is what is allowed, is how it would have been stated. But anybody has the right to request a rezon of their property, no matter what the zoning classification is. I wanna clear up a couple of things.
Sure.
This is kind of not like me to say this, but I'm kind of offended at our, at our community for stereotyping people that are living in apartments. There's great people that live in apartments. So I'm kind of offended by you guys stereotyping people because they're in apartments.
Can I say something?
That's kinda ridiculous. No, I'm, I have the mic, ma'am. Thank you.
I apologize. Don't have to be great.
Mr. Black talked about the landscaping, that none would be required. Our city code does require a certain amount of landscaping for the property. So there will be trees, there will be grass that are required for that property. There will also be improvements on Deion Street, which will be curb gutter sidewalk all the way on there to improve that whole corner and that intersection. On a multifamily dwelling, you are required a certain amount of open space, private and public for the individuals. It's three hundred and fifty square feet for each unit. If the square footage is over twelve hundred square feet for the unit, and these are sixteen hundred square foot units. So each one is required three hundred and fifty square feet of open space, plus another eighty square feet of usable, private open space. So that could be like a patio, something like that is required. Also, they talked about the parking on the street. Yeah, it's a congested neighborhood, but in, for a multifamily, which is not required for a single-family or a duplex, they are not allowed to put RVs, snowmobile trailers, boats, personal RVs stored on the property. And our city code does not allow them to store them on the street either. So that problem is solved in our city code right there. It's just up to code enforcement that would have to resolve that problem if they decided to do that. They could put these vehicles, if there was a screened-in area, screened from public view on the property, but this property does not have that option. There's not enough room for that. Seems like the biggest question and biggest concern is the streets and the traffic right now. It seems like the problem is right now, it's not even with this on the roads. So you guys have a tough decision tonight of what to do with this property. But I still feel it needs to be rezoned to a residential classification, because industrial could be way worse than anything. And that's all I have to say. Unless I have a question.
Councilor Welch.
Brian, I'm hoping you can help explain the zoning in, in the Old Milltown area. The majority of it is currently zoned...
R1.
R1.
Yeah, some commercial and industrial. You have commercial up at the end and then industrial throughout the backside there along the, the slough between those properties and the island, so the old cannery property.
But commercial Boise areas, the residential, not the outskirts, most of it is R1.
Most of it is all R1, yeah.
On the, the duplexes that are in the Old Town area, how many are there?
There's one directly behind Ms. Ramos's house. There's one to the south of hers. And there is one at the corner of Deion and Washington. It's a white house. I believe it just sold to a landscaping guy that owns it. And I believe he just sold, that's always been a duplex also, which is directly north of Napa Auto Parts.
Okay, so there's three...
That I'm aware of.
...that you can remember.
Yeah, that I can remember.
So with this one going from industrial to R3, it would be considered, what, a spot zoning?
A spot zoning, yes, correct.
Correct. And when we're looking at planning for a city, 'cause I know you've taken the classes that I have. Spot zoning can be a little difficult and a little trying, because it doesn't really fit the area that it surrounds.
Correct.
And so could cause problems later down the road.
Correct.
You know, I, I agree that City of Emmett does need housing, 'cause I'm in the industry and we see it all the time. But there's a time and a place for specific housing such as a fourplex and such. So I just wanted to have you clarify, you know, the zoning in that area, what spot zoning was and how it could be...
You're absolutely correct. Spot zone is a zone that's, a zone that is not affiliated with the other zones in the area, and it's generally not in conformance with the other areas. It is a residential classification. They're both residential, so you're not going to residential and a commercial.
Right.
So it is all a residential classification. So yeah, it is, it is a spot zone. I mean, there's, hands down, that's what it would be.
And planning, if you're looking at planning, you know, I'm trying to remember my classes that I took a long time ago. Planning, you typically don't want, it's not smart planning to do spot zoning throughout the city when it comes to certain ones. Like you don't wanna put a commercial smack dab in the middle...
Correct.
...between Carson and, and Boise and put whatever there, you know, in the middle of houses.
Correct.
And that would be the same, you know, anywhere else in town.
Right.
So, okay. Well, thank you for clarifying.
Mayor?
Yes.
Brian, on, speaking of Carson and North Commercial, isn't there a couple duplexes around in that area?
There is upon Carson, North Commercial, Oxley, that area, so which, yeah, Oxley's the road that runs up there by Bill's Machine Shop. There's one, two, three, there's, I think, four duplexes, two of them are two stories.
Nothing new to the neighborhood.
But that's nothing new. Those are four blocks away, five blocks away, whatever they are. But they're in the general vicinity of...
Old Milltown.
The R1 zone, Old Milltown.
Correct.
Our old town, that town, part of town, First Street, Second Street, Third Street, you're all over. There are very narrow streets. All of the old parts of the community are very narrow streets. And there's nothing you can do about that, except say no parking on the streets. I mean, that's the only thing, you could open them up, which is not realistic to people that, that's the only parking they do have, so.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. So Brian, I've heard a little bit about the garage. I see this is eleven by nineteen for the garage. Maybe Mr. Black can explain that a little better. But that would be the size of a normal car, eleven feet...
A single, a single...
Single car, right. A normal eleven feet is enough, 'cause a lot of those carports are ten by twenty, and they fit two cars in there, okay like that too. Is there a specific size for the parking spaces outside? I know, 'cause they...
Yeah, we have a requirement by code. I believe it's nine by nineteen is a, a parallel parked stall. I mean, it's on our code, I don't, I, I think it's nine by nineteen is what the stall is supposed to be.
Or compact, and you see just a normal one. So this would be a normal-sized parking...
Normal-sized parking space, yes.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, Mr. Solomon, that you wanted to clarify for the record?
No, I think that was all.
All right. Thank you.
Brian, thank you.
Is there any other individual that would like to speak at the public hearing at this time?
Can I clarify something he said? Yeah?
Sure.
He said that we were judging somebody because they lived in an apartment. I was young once, I lived in apartments. I'm telling you from people, I said I went down and I talked to all my residents, the people of my neighbors. Twenty-three people told me that there was drug issues there. This wasn't something I made up, it wasn't something I was guessing, wasn't something I was assuming. I was saying what the, my neighbors told me, and that there was police there many times.
There was no police there now, so I, I guess I'm, that's confusing.
No, 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 the duplex that's directly behind me...
Oh, well, that, okay, that's a separate, that's a completely different issue.
Well, not...
It has nothing to do with our, whether or not this should be industrial, R3.
Okay, well, I, I don't want it to be apartments or a fourplex, because it does tend to bring people, unfortunately, that don't plan maybe to live there for very long and, and get into trouble. I'm basing this from my neighbors telling me that the duplex that lives right behind me had like three or four different owners and, or, well, yeah, even owners. And it went from different owners and different residents, and there was lots of police activity. I'm just telling you what my neighbors told me. And so it is, there, there was issue. It wasn't something we were, you know, just saying everybody that lives in an apartment is a druggie or drunk or, or whatever. You know, we've all been young once, we all have to start somewhere. I agree with that.
Sure.
But for that location, I just...
All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. What's that?
I'd like to say something.
Wow.
Can we?
Okay.
I, I wanna thank all of you that came in and voiced your opinions. It's tough for us to evaluate the whole situation. What we have to do, as city council members, is take into consideration what's the best for the City of Emmett. And that's where we make our decisions. But I really appreciate you guys coming in and voicing your opinion, and thank you for your time.
All right. Mr. Black, you'll get the last word, and I'll make the last call.
Thank you. I did wanna address the spot zone issue that Ms. Welch brought up. It's spot zone now. It just happens to be spot zone commercial, or industrial, excuse me, instead of R3. It's, it's in an area surrounded on three sides. Maybe I misunderstand. It's surrounded on three sides by residential, needs to be turned residential. I don't intend to do as such without the R3. Sounds to me like I need to start an eighteen-wheeler shop, 'cause it's a, basically a truck stop is what I hear. I didn't experience that when I was working there. There's a tight area. I've definitely addressed all of the issues. I'm more than willing to comply with some of the code stuff that Brian talked about. I am newer to this business, so there's some learning to do for me. I am newer to this business, so there's some learning to do for me. More than willing to adjust, of course, to the codes, and some of the numbers I got from Brian kind of made me realize that there has to be a few more things incorporated into the plan, which I'm totally willing and capable of doing. I want to just keep it short and say thank you. Take any questions from that?
Any questions? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other individual wish to speak at this public hearing? Any other individual wish to speak at this public hearing? Last call. Any individual who would wish to speak at this hearing?
So, mayor?
Yes.
Before you close the public hearing, counsel, my advice is make sure you feel like you've received all the information that you need from this public hearing to close the public hearing, deliberate, and then make a decision. Because once we close the public hearing, there should not be any new information come in. Your decision, your deliberation and decision should be based on what you heard in the public hearing tonight.
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know if I can ask this question, though, to the chief of the fire department. How much of an impact, or is, I mean, I don't know if you knew anything about this and the possibility with the traffic that's down there, you know, with the parking, all that, how much of an impact or increase is that going to cause for the fire department to get down those streets when they have to respond to an emergency?
So I drove the area after it came before Brian, and I looked down there. Like he said, the traffic, or not the traffic, but the parking is difficult down there. We would have fire lanes and access to the building back there, plus it would be higher protected. It would have sprinkler systems in it, since it is a multifamily dwelling above two. But I wouldn't have problems with the access down there.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. If there's any council member that believes that this matter should be continued for additional information or data, then speak now or forever hold your peace. I declare the meeting closed, or I shouldn't say meeting, the public hearing closed. At this time, the council is to make a decision on whether or not the property in question should be R3, or remain as it currently is.
Mayor?
Yes.
So the mayor brought something up to my attention. It may be, it seemed like it's a little misleading about whether this is a multiple choice. It's not. The applicant, Mr. Black, has requested that his property be rezoned from industrial to R3. So what you have before you is just that. And the standard of review is, as Brian pointed out at the beginning of the hearing, is whether the request to rezone to R3 is in accordance with the adopted comprehensive plan. And in Brian's report, you'll see those several paragraphs that talk about the language in the comprehensive plan that Brian found and the zoning commission found would support the rezone. So under our code, you've really got two choices. One is to approve the rezone, basically in accordance with the staff report and the information you received tonight. Or number two is to deny the application to amend the zoning ordinance to R3. And in that case, we would also need your reasons for denying it. Specifically, we would know, we would need on the record reasons why the comprehensive plan doesn't support the rezone. You have any questions about what that standard is that I can talk through with you? Now get out of your way.
All right. So the question is whether or not you find that the proposed rezone from industrial to residential to R3 conforms with the basic intent of the comprehensive plan policies and future land use map, and in accordance with the staff recommendation. If you find that, I'm going to ask that you respond simply by saying yea. If you do not find that, I'm going to ask you to state your reasons on the record.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we make a statement?
For?
The explanation of maybe our decision on this?
President Nebiker, how do you respond?
I want to respond with some information provided to the people that came forward with the neighborhood concerns. Comprehensive plan is a very detailed paperwork that we can go through to look at all these different things like here, too. We've heard a lot of statements tonight, and I do appreciate everybody coming tonight and explaining these things, too. Going through the comprehensive plan, there's several sections in there. One is private property rights, not only your own private properties, but also the property of the owner that owns that property now. He has certain rights with that property that he has to be able to follow through with that, too. Going through the entire comprehensive plan, it talks about property rights for everybody. It talks about encouraging infield development. It talks about residential, commercial, and light industry, working around residential. It talks about housing close to employment and transportation, and schools, and downtown centers. It goes through a whole bunch of stuff like that, too. The big thing I'm hearing from most citizens, and I do appreciate that, is the traffic concerns. This is not fixing the traffic concerns by putting this as industrial or by R4, R3, I'm sorry. It's not going to change that traffic that you're having right now. The problem that we have that is maybe getting with the chief of police, or come back to us and talk to us some more, and try to discuss that and find some other options. You know, there's several streets in town that are really narrow like that. One-way street may be an option, or, you know, there's other things we do. But right now, we are having a huge problem, sounds like, with traffic. And that's the biggest problem we're having in downtown, sounds like, is the traffic. Based on the provided information on the fourplex, it looks like that by paperwork, it does supply the off-street parking required for that development. So I think going through all the testimony that you've given tonight, and everything else, and reading through comprehensive plan, this fits the requirement for the development that he's presenting to myself, anyway. So I vote yea.
President Nebiker, yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Counselor Butler, yea. Counselor Henderson?
Nay.
Nay. I have five yays, one nay. The rezone is approved.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we do that, I guess I'd still like to see that in the form of a motion, where a motion is made to approve the rezone...
Sure.
...and adopt the staff report and findings.
President Nebiker, I will entertain your motion now for the rezone based upon the vote.
I make a motion to approve the rezone for parcel number RPE 3360009001A for applicant David Young, designate the zoning classification as R3 multifamily residential, and direct staff to create an order to bring back to city council and adopt the staff's findings.
I'll second it. It's been seconded. Did everyone here understand the motion and the second? I'm not going to restate it. Then I will reconfirm that vote to make sure, based upon the motion. President Nebiker?
Yea.
Counselor Butler?
Nay.
Nay. Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Resinkin?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Welch?
Nay.
Nay. I have two nays, four yays. The motion passes. Thank you, folks. Next matter is the consent agenda. The listing of items A, B, and C, approval of the minutes for 23 March, the CIP workshop, as well as the regular meeting, approval of accounts payable, and for bartender David Chair will entertain a motion for, to approval of the agenda, consent agenda.
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right. Motion has been made to approve the consent agenda by Counselor Henderson. Second was by Counselor Welch. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Going on, I guess we don't have any updates, to the non-consent agenda business, the first matter is approval of the inter-agency joint powers apparatus maintenance service agreement.
Mayor and council, in your packets, and before you today, you have a copy of the inter-agency joint powers apparatus maintenance service agreement. I am seeking a motion to allow the signing of this agreement between us and the Starfire. Starfire actually requires this. This gives the city fire department the option of using their services.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is this something that would happen regularly, or do you have a local mechanic that you'd be using in most cases?
Right now, we're going out to bid for, through various mechanics in the area. The one thing about these people, they're all trained by Pierce and their factory. They're not cheap, but they are very, very thorough. They do service with Radiant Fire and a lot of the other fire departments in the area.
Mayor?
Yes.
Are you specifically looking to use them exclusively, or in addition to the mechanics you are going out for bid with?
This would not be exclusive, no.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll just chime in, because the chief and I talked about this already. This is one of those things where but for Starfire putting this contract in front of us, the chief would have just taken care of this administratively as the department head. But as we discussed it, Starfire wanted this agreement signed, and so my recommendation was to bring it in front of the council. It's not an exclusive agreement, it's just something that Starfire requires if we send them vehicles to work on.
Correct.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the inter-agency joint powers apparatus maintenance service agreement between the City of Emmett and Starfire.
It probably should be countersigned by the mayor, since...
Signed by the mayor?
Second. All right. It's been moved and seconded that we'd be allowed to enter into the, what's the official? Anyway, the inter-agency agreement with Starfire to work on our city fire vehicles, the main motion having been made by President Nebiker, seconded by Counselor Butler, and I'll, Chief Christensen will sign on behalf of the city fire department, but I'll sign on behalf of the city since I'm statutorily required to. So, that being the case, President Nebiker?
Yea.
Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Counselor Resinkin?
Yea.
Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
Counselor Welch?
Yea.
Six yays, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next matter is Lexi Poll policy updates. Chief Kunkka.
Mayor and council, before I do go into the Lexi Poll policies, I would like to say that I was able to step out in the hallway and listen to the sheriff give a press release on the incident that the mayor mentioned earlier. He did say that there was one body located. There was one body. All right. So the Lexi Poll policy that I submitted, President Nebiker had contacted me with an email, and it had brought to my attention some things that I do need to address. One of them is that at the beginning of policy 313.1, the numbering sequence is off. And if there is a motion made today, I would ask that it be brought to my, to the attention that that will be corrected, that numbering sequence will be corrected. The other code that he brought to my attention was 301.4. The fourth paragraph needs a space between the "the chief," although I do like being called "the chief." There should be a space in between there. And there are a number of areas that it says "the chief" and there is a space. That should also be corrected. That'd be an easy thing for Deputy Chief Babcock to do. So those corrections will be made. Are there any other questions about the policy?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chief, and I guess this is just more for my information, like that, too, but, you know, I seen in there also, the code 300 dash, or .3.4, and the carotid, carotid, carotid control hold, and 300.3.7 respiratory restraint, I know it talks about, those are only be able to use when use of deadly force is allowed. Are these topics taught at post or in-house, and stuff like that?
They are taught at post now.
They are?
Yes, in the last two to three years, and the reason I say that is because the last officer we had go through post, they actually sent us, he had to ask for us if we wanted him trained in that or not, and we did say, yes, we did. And so they do offer that in basic now. It is new to post, but they are doing that, yes.
Just all the concerns around the United States with this type of stuff, I just thought that might be a concern. Is that, continual training on that, do you know? Is there a certification or anything, do you know?
I don't know if there's a recertification on that, no. It's pretty new, and I haven't had to experience that yet with my guys.
Good to have policy, then.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Is there a motion with regard to approval of Lexi Poll policy updates as presented by the chief?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Lexi Poll policy updates provided by Chief Kunkka, with him correcting the topics that he already discussed in the meeting, 313.1.1 and 3.3.1.1.
That's separate and apart from the resolution that you had, is that correct, chief?
It's all together.
All right. Second. So the motion is to approve resolution R 2021-03?
That is correct.
All right. Motion has been made by President Nebiker, and the second has been made by Counselor Butler, this being a resolution. President Nebiker?
Yea.
Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Counselor Resinkin?
Yea.
Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
Counselor Welch?
Yea.
Six yays, motion passes.
Thank you.
Who is taking up, I guess it's going to be Mike Canittle on payment of Coastline equipment in the island of $24,916.69.
Counsel, I do have some specifics on this if you have any questions. Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to approve exactly what Mayor Petrie just said.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mike, is that the South Johns rental for the equipment, is that correct?
Yeah, for various pieces of equipment. We also had a loader that broke down, and so part of that bill is the repair of that loader, but we also had to rent a loader during that time. So those are the bigger ticket items on that bill.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
A motion that...
Wait, wait, Counselor Henderson, we got another one.
Oh, I was just going to make a motion.
I tell you, stand by... I tell you, stand by for the second, and then you get to make the next motion. Counselor Sorensen?
I make a motion that we approve the payment to coastline equipment in the amount of $24,916.69.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson, a motion was made by Counselor Sorensen.
I second that motion.
You second the motion, okay. Motion has been made by Counselor Henderson, seconded by Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Sorensen made the motion, Counselor Henderson seconded the motion to approve the payment to coastline equipment in the amount of $24,916.69. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? Hearing none, any abstentions? Hearing none. Chair rules, motion passes unanimously. The next is the approval of reimbursement request to Idaho Commerce in the amount of
Counsel, this is for the Idaho Gem Grant that we did for the Bears Project on South Johns. We've submitted all the appropriate paperwork to get reimbursed from that grant. They just require, now that that's done, a invoice from us, signed by the mayor attesting to that reimbursement. So that's what we're asking for tonight is the approval, a motion to approve the mayor's signature for reimbursement for that.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Henderson?
I make a motion that we would probably, Mayor, to sign a reimbursement request to Idaho Commerce in the amount of $49,957 for traffic control and boring equipment for Idaho Gem Grant, Bear's Commercial Central Project.
All right. Is it okay if I condense that to the Bear's Project?
Yeah.
Purposes of...
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right. Motion has been made to approve the reimbursement request to the Idaho Commerce in the amount of $49,957 for the Bear's Project, seconded by Counselor Sorensen, Counselor Henderson making the main motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Chair rules, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next matter, Mr. Sullivan, is the T-Hanger lease agreement with Emmett T-Hanger Association Inc.
Good evening again. Yes, Jake's been involved with these next three documents extensively as our attorney, and the owner's attorney have drafted all of these documents, so Jake, if you would want to speak to anything?
Yeah, I thought it might just be easier.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You've got two documents related to the eight hangar site there out of the airport with Mr. Eckberg. What they are doing is they're, they put together a, basically a condo association that will own the improvements. We're still the land, the landlord on the, on the bear land, but the owners are going to be buying into this condo association. So in working with their attorney, they put together this declaration. The only reason why the city is signing on to it is so, we have, as the landlord, we still got some control and some say on if that association goes away. We want to know who our tenants are, so I added some language in there to, to make sure that we stay informed. Otherwise, I thought it was pretty straightforward. Their attorney did a great job on that. The lease is just our standard lease with the usual provisions, but you'll see that the, the rent and the insurance requirements are higher. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you've got any. Otherwise, we'll need two motions. One for the lease, for the mayor to sign the lease, and the other one for the mayor to sign the declaration.
Shall we just stick them up one at a time, then?
Sure.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So Jake, is this, I guess this is kind of like HOA, it kind of looks like when they're doing this association thing. So if those owner are the person that buys into that or rents those things, if they don't comply, does the city have to report that back to the person that has the contract with the lease of the land?
Yeah, so it, there is going to be, the association has bylaws, and they'll have a board and officers that will need to run the association, just like a normal HOA would. The city really shouldn't care so long as, A, we're getting our rent every year, and two, that they're maintaining the, the improvements according to the standards. So there, there would be a way for us to step in if we needed to, but it should be self-governing.
All right, any other questions? The third, the third item here...
The third one's not related to...
Sorry, that's a different, that's a separate one, just a transfer of ownership to.
I saw some different names.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve the T-Hanger lease agreement with Emmett T-Hanger Association Inc. with the mayor to sign.
All right.
I'll second.
Second.
I'm sorry, Counselor Henderson, Counselor Welch, you did it before you did. But hold that thought, because we've got another matter coming up. So a motion that may have been made with regard to approving the lease agreement, mayor to sign, between the city of Emmett and the Emmett T-Hanger Association. And that second was made by Counselor Welch. Is there any further discussion with regard to that motion? All right. This being a lease. President Nebiker, how do you vote?
Yea.
Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yea.
Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
Counselor Welch?
Yea.
I have six yays. That means it passes unanimously. Okay, taking up the next matter is the declaration, so-called leasehold condominium declaration. We've already heard the explanation. Are there any further questions for Counselor Sweet? Hearing none. Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the declaration, mayor signing on behalf of the city.
Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Henderson?
I make a motion to approve Emmett T-Hanger Project leasehold condo declaration with Emmett T-Hanger Association Inc. with the mayor to sign.
All right. And is there a second?
I second it.
Been seconded by Counselor Sorensen, Counselor Henderson, of course, having made the main motion to approve the Emmett T-Hanger Project leasehold condo declaration with the Emmett T-Hanger Association, mayor to sign. Any further discussion? Hearing none. President Nebiker?
Yea.
President Butler?
Yea.
President Butler. Counselor Butler. Counselor, well, you could be the president or something. Yeah, you have several corporations. Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yea.
Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
And Counselor Welch?
Yea.
Six yays, passes unanimously. Thank you. The next matter is...
A lease agreement. Basically, this is taking a lease from Cadwalder Anstrad Family Partnership and transferring it to CNC Aircraft Property Management. Same owner, just a...
It is. This is, this is actually a lease assignment from a related owner. I, I need to disclose, Jason Anstrad is a client of my firm. I did not do the work, but my partner Alan Bosch actually created CNC Aircraft Property Management LLC. I do not think this is a conflict of interest. But if anybody on the council believes that it is, I'm happy to step aside. We can table this to the next meeting and you can talk with another council. But all this is, is a, an assignment of an existing lease to a related entity, as you see on the signature block. Jason owns both entities.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, I understand quickly, this same person, he's just changing the name of his business per se, but he's still the same lessee from their first contract?
Correct.
Fair to say, say that CNC Aircraft Property Management LLC, one of the Cs is Cadwalder?
That's a great guess.
Well, I, in my opinion, there's no, there's no conflict in fact, and in fact, I'm not sure there's even the appearance. And if there is an appearance, it's not an issue as far as I'm concerned.
I figured I better disclose it, though, so.
So anyway, unless someone has, has some heartburn over that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the hangar lease agreement with CNC Aircraft Property Management LLC with the mayor to sign. That would be the assignment of the...
The lease assignment, yes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do we need to change anything because it is changing the name on the original lease, or will this take care of all that transfer?
This takes care of it. So this will just go in the, in the file for this, this particular hangar. So all of the, all the obligations and duties of the original lessee are now going to be the responsibility of the new lessee. So they're just assigning everything over.
Looks like a partnership became an LLC.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve the hangar lease agreement with CNC Aircraft Properties Management LLC and the mayor to sign.
Okay, you mean a hangar lease assignment agreement?
Yes.
I'll second.
Main motion has been made by President Nebiker to approve the hangar lease assignment agreement with CNC Aircraft Property Management LLC. Mayor to sign, seconded by Counselor Welch. Any further discussion? Hearing none. President Nebiker?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
Yea. And Counselor Welch?
Yea.
Yea. Have six yays, motion passes unanimously. Oh, we got the, no, that's it. We, we've concluded all of that. So it is now time for reports.
Standard saying is...
And as it turns out, you're there.
The report will be in your next packet, so I have nothing to talk about unless you have any questions for me. I guess I could say that we did receive phase three, four, and five of Payette River Orchard subdivision, construction drawings for review, so that should be underway, I'd say, within the next couple of months.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What's the other one that's going to be possibly coming up in that, on that 12th Street? What was the name, is it Legacy?
There was Legacy Heights that we approved. You guys already approved the preliminary plat, and we're working on the engineering and some improvements that are at Substation and 12th Street.
And that's still moving forward, then?
As far as I know, it is. We are working with their engineer and our engineer to come up with some solutions for that intersection.
Harvest Valley, is there any more phases available, or are they all used?
Phase six is being constructed right now. They're probably a week away from curb gutter sidewalk in there, and then pavement.
Is that the last phase?
That's the last phase of Harvest Valley. That's the end of Harvest Valley. Correct. There's about 50 lots, I believe, right around there, that last phase. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Madam Clark?
Hello. I don't have a report this evening. Do you have any questions? One comment, stay tuned for the next meeting. Audit is up on the next meeting, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Chief Christiansen?
I have no report this time, but we did an open house on Tuesday during the daytime. We had about 25, 30 people come through. It was a lot of fun. We have some good training material out there. So if you have children or grandchildren that would like to come by and learn a little bit up, or if you'd like to learn about fire safety, come on by and we'll teach you. We have a great prop for putting out stove fires and an active 911 call, so a kid can pick up a phone and it simulates calling 911. So, yeah, other things like that. You're welcome, Tuesday, between 5:00 and 7:00. And I believe the police department might be, might be there as well, so, yeah. Good tech team. All right, thanks.
Mayor? Next week is Volunteer Week, so make sure you tell all of your employees how much we appreciate them.
I will tell my team, yes, sir. Thank you.
Alice Kelly?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will have my full report for you at our next meeting. Again, I, thanks for recognizing National Volunteer Week. We certainly utilize our share to keep the library going, and we're quite blessed. And we have a special, you know, acknowledgement and just encourage everybody. I know each and every one of us have our share of volunteers to...
Before we leave, I'll give you this original on the Library Week Declaration. I made it for next week, since it would have been too late for last week, but it's in honor of your volunteers.
Okay, excellent.
And kudos to the mayor. He's the one that provided that tonight, the information about next week being the employee, or the...
Yeah.
Because I would never have not known in less than about that, so.
Well, and I think, I spoke with Dell briefly, and I think he's going to have a really nice write-up. I think it's important, more than ever, the year we have just gone through, where would we be today without all of our volunteers that, you know, got us through that? So he'll have a really nice write-up for that.
Well, just so you know, in addition to Volunteer Week, I believe it's Wednesday, and I'm quite certain it's Wednesday, it's National Administrative Assistant Day.
That is true. I will have to remember that.
So if you have any administrative assistance...
Yes. I have a brand-new one, and she's doing spectacular.
Well, good.
So I'll make sure she knows that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Kunkka?
Mayor and council, I did think that I should report to you that we have had recently some reports of trailers parked on North Boise. Two of them have been removed, and they were immediately removed, abated. Also, we have had on North Boise, just North Boise, we've had six junk vehicles since 2018 that have been removed. We have had one crash since 2018 on North Boise. So I just thought that would be additional information we could add to that. My report, my report will be next week, next meeting. You have any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Are you Clint Simmons? Are you here on behalf of Clint Simmons?
I, I'm not. We're just skipping over him.
Oh, okay, good. And Mr. Canittle, systems?
Anybody have any questions on anything? All right, thanks, have a good night.
Thank you. That appears to be everything on the agenda that you approved. The chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Mayor? Yes, sir. I make a motion to adjourn.